Thirty seconds. No mic. Okay, welcome everybody to the Bellevue City Council meeting. It is Tuesday, October fourth, two thousand twenty-two at seven P M. We will start with the pledge of allegiance followed by the invocation. Pastor Michael Lusk is here, Senior Pastor at First Baptist Church, one twelve East Twenty-Third Avenue.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you join me in prayer? Father, we come before you this evening and we thank you and praise you for who you are. We thank you for your love for us. We thank you for your grace and your mercy, your compassion. Father, we thank you for your provision in our lives and in the city. We pray that you would continue to watch over us and guide us and guard us and protect us. What I pray, your blessings upon the men and women that serve the city. Father, I pray that you would draw each of them unto yourself, that they might know you and trust in you, Lord. Father, I pray tonight that you would give them wisdom as they lead and guide the city. We pray for our government officials. We pray for the servants of our city, our public officials. We pray for our school administrators. We pray for every person that that leads and guides this city, Lord, that you would give them wisdom. Father, that this might be a place that would flourish, Lord, that might bring honor and glory to you. Father, I pray tonight as they conduct business that you would guide them, that you give them wisdom as they make each of their decisions. And, Lord, I pray that you would be present in this place. Father, we pray that you would continue to draw our city closer together. We pray these things in the strong name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Michael. I'll call the meeting to order. Susan, would you take roll call, please?
Councilman Casey.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman McCaw.
Here.
Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilman Burns.
Here.
And Councilwoman Welch.
Here.
Thank you. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall to council chambers. Item five, approval of agenda consent agenda claims and advisory committee reports. Five A, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Burns, second by Welch. Any comments? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item five B, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Oh, do I have a motion? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Preister, second by Burns. Any comments or questions on the consent agenda? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seven, special presentations. We have none. Item eight, organizational matters, none. Nine, approved citizen communications. We did not receive any. Item ten, liquor licenses. We did not receive any. Item eleven, ordinances for adoption, third reading. Eleven A, ordinance number four-one-zero-eight, request to amend section five dot two-three. City of Bellevue zoning ordinance regarding permitted uses in the B G M zoning district regarding multifamily residential density. Applicant Alex Perry. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four-one-zero-eight and ordinance to amend section five point two-three, ordinance number forty-one oh-four, Bellevue zoning ordinance relating to allowable multifamily residential density in the B G M Metropolitan General Business District to repeal such sections as heretofore existing to provide for an effective date.
Thank you. And do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion. We approve ordinance number forty-one zero-eight.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Councilwoman Welch?
Um, just want to clarify, either Jim or Tammy, if they do need to go to, they don't fill the spaces and they need to put, let's say, a studio apartment in the back or whatever, that has to come back before the city council, correct?
Correct. So this text amendment, though, applies to the entire B G M corridor. Um, but I know what you're referencing, yes. And if this specific applicant who had the redevelopment plan at the last city council agenda, if he wants to amend it, then that would need to come back before city council.
So would, if any person needed to amend whatever to do the same thing, they would have to come back to us?
In a TIF redevelopment plan situation, yes. But as far as this text amendments goes, if it's approved, it will allow anyone within that B G M zoning district to um, build to this density as long as the infrastructure is there.
And this, the reason we're making this change is because this is what Omaha and some other surrounding cities are already doing.
This text, this text amendment was brought forward by a private applicant. So in looking at it, yes, I I looked at, um, you know, what La Vista, Papillion, Sarpy County, Omaha does. Um, Omaha allows as dense as five hundred square feet of lot area per dwelling unit. Um, while some of our neighboring jurisdictions are around twelve to fifteen hundred. So this is not as dense as Papillion, La Vista, or Sarpy County allow. Um, but it's, um, it's above where Omaha would allow people to build to.
And what it does is it makes this whole item development developer friendly and enticing them to come, come develop in Bellevue.
That's the argument as to why the applicant brought this forward, yes.
Okay, thank you, Tammy.
Councilman Burns?
Tammy, okay, uh, can you just refresh my memory and tell me exactly the area that this will impact? I mean, maybe somewhat of the boundary lines.
So the B G M corridor is unique to, um, Old Town. Um, roughly, it's going to be from Lincoln Road on the east or sorry, the west side. And it's going to go all the way down the corridor, um, to roughly Hancock Street, um, or thereabouts on the east side. Roughly a block north, block south, also goes along Franklin Street to the north to like Washington Park.
Okay. And then I know you kind of explained this at our last meeting, um, but I was wondering if you would kind of help take me through when sort of that kicks in. So if somebody's building, we'll just say apartment complexes, right? Like, and can you explain, so the first?
So there has to be ten thousand square feet of lot area for the first four units. So say you're in the B G M zoning district and you have ten thousand square feet of lot area, you couldn't do more than four dwelling units. Um, outside, and so this amendment doesn't change that.
Yep.
Outside of that first ten thousand, this amendment would allow you to build to a density of six hundred square feet of lot area per dwelling unit. So for all of the lot area above and beyond ten thousand square feet you had, you would be able to do an additional unit, additional dwelling unit for every six hundred square feet of lot area that you had. And that's reduced from eight hundred square feet, which is what it is currently.
Okay, so then, for example, if you were building up, um...
It's still based on that lot area. It's still based on that property. Um, it doesn't, this doesn't impact height or how tall it can be. It simply impacts the density. So we're still going by how large that property is. The larger the property, the more dense it can be. The smaller the property, the less dense it can be.
Okay. And so does that just mean the larger the property, so essentially you could just pretty much stuff more people in there? Is that?
You could have more density, yes.
Yes, okay. Um, and then, I mean, so it's just kind of based on what Councilwoman Welch asked to, just to make sure that I'm understanding that if, um, like for this, if we're referring to like a specific project that may be in the works, um, individually, that that would have to come back in front of us if this were to apply to that. But if, for some reason, everything lined up for somebody, um, they wouldn't actually have to come in front of the council. This would just apply. And then, um...
So the B G M zoning district in and of itself doesn't require any kind of site plan approval. Um, what Councilwoman Welch is referring to is if you have a project that utilizes the tax increment financing and they have a very specific redevelopment plan attached to that. Once that's approved, if somebody wants to make modifications, then the process would be to come back through city council to do that.
Okay. And then just in your professional opinion, um, I mean, is this, is there like a downside? Are there, what are the upsides? Can you kind of take me through that?
I guess in my mind and just looking at the research that I did, um, I I don't think we should build as dense as what Omaha does. Do I think it's fair that we would have more density than a Sarpy County or, you know, Papillion? Yes, I do. Um, I'm okay with it because of the provision in there that states you can go to that density provided all the necessary infrastructure is available as determined by staff. Um, so I think, I feel like that covers us, so to speak.
Yeah.
Um, so yes, you can have them, you can have more density, but you can't have the density if the infrastructure is not in place for it, which in my opinion makes sense.
Okay, so...
And La Vista, I looked at, when I looked at the different zoning ordinances, La Vista had language very similar to that. So I drew from their, um, zoning ordinance because I thought that that was appropriate.
Okay. So then I guess what, what is the, I, so this, this relates to the project. Okay, so the applicant is Alex Perry. So then it relates to specifically the project off of West Mission. So, um, and I don't know if this is more of a question for you, Jim, but is the justification for doing this, um, just based solely on that project? I don't know. I mean...
I don't think it's solely just for that project. I think, uh, when we go to the south side of the of Mission, it could potentially apply there too. So as any other future developments, it's for consideration, but I think the litmus test is going to be that if the infrastructure is there, so we wouldn't allow that if the infrastructure isn't there.
That makes sense. Okay. Um, and then, just real quick, since this is the third reading, we would, we would have to open it up for a public hearing if we had any questions for Mr. Garing. Are you guys opposed to that? Okay, um, well, I, yeah, I'd move that we open this up for a public hearing.
I'm going to second that just for discussion.
No, the only reason is, is I just want to ask specifically, I know, uh, Mr. Garing's here in the audience, so I just want to, we kind of had some dialogue, um, at our last public hearing, and I just wanted some clarification to you in regards to this, um, if that makes any sense, as far as the insurance portion of it, when he said that, you know, this is really just sort of an insurance policy, just in the event that the commercial or or the retail or whatever is going to go on the bottom may not work out. And he said it doesn't look like that's going to be an issue. So I just wanted to clarify that. That's all I'm trying to do. That's why I'm asking that we open it up for public hearing.
And my understanding, Mr. Mayor, and Councilman Burns, is if he needs that quote-unquote insurance policy, he has to come back in front of us to get that approved. This doesn't just open it up for him to do it. It's only if COVID two comes in and and, you know, everything breaks loose with regards to that. That would be the only reason that, you know, basically what they're saying right now is that you've got some really good potential people coming in and, um, it's just in case something breaks loose.
No, and that's...
Further comment on that? I think we discussed this at length last meeting, so I mean, I don't know what other questions there are, but...
No, I know. But if it's going to impact a whole area and and we're really maybe just approving this for one specific project, and I mean, if we're talking about density, um...
Yeah, this is not one specific project. Uh, this is the whole street, basically, from Lincoln to to basically Hancock. It's to develop that whole, uh, downtown area into a little bit denser project. I mean, the people want, the people want lower taxes, so that's what you have to do, is you have to put more, more investment per acre on ground, and that, that's what helps your mill levy. So this is a whole pro, this covers a whole development area. Hopefully, this is a catalyst for the whole area and we get not only these developers, but three or four more that want to build buildings down there, so...
And doesn't it also make it available for, to make it more developer friendly to invite developers to come and want to build in Bellevue?
Well, your performance better. Um, when you could put some more units on a lot, your performer looks better and more investors are more interested in it. It was discussed last, last week, our last meeting. But yeah, there's a motion, um, motion by Burns, second by Welch, to open it up for public hearing. Is there any more comment? Okay, please vote.
I have five yes votes and one no vote with Welch voting no. Motion carries.
Okay, so we are open for public hearing on eleven A, ordinance number four-one-zero-eight, and you can ask your question to...
Thank you, Mr. Garing, if you're willing. So...
Uh, for the record, Jeff Garing, uh, forty-two twenty-two Davenport Street. Go ahead, Thomas.
Perfect. Okay, so just, I know that when we spoke last, last meeting, um, you said in the event that it it wouldn't work out. I kind of asked what maybe that plan was and I just, the, I guess, since you being the developer, I know you said that on the bottom floor, that might look like, okay, splitting it in half. And I was just kind of looking at things. So if West Mission was to remain storefronts and then you were to actually, um, you know, I suppose, make the uh, most northern portion of it with all the parking, I mean, units for living in. Could you just tell me what that would really look like and what that layout might look like? Because I just started thinking about it, and then if, you know, you do have storefronts and then they don't have backs, I guess, just what does it look like if you were to take me through it, um, before we actually, you know, approve something like this? Um, and then my understanding is, yes, it's for a whole area, but I know you guys are the applicant and that's the only project that I'm aware of. And so I'm just, in my brain, I'm assuming that it's specific to that, so...
Well, the, the original, and I think the mayor is correct, and we talked about that last week, that this is really just a minor portion of it. So it turns out it does have the benefit of having insurance policy because it allows us. Right now, we're just a little shy of eighteen thousand square foot of retail space. So there's a concern that this is new retail to an area that hasn't been developed for many, many years, as you know. Uh, so there was some fear with the joint venture partner we had that they don't know Bellevue like we know Bellevue. And so uh, I was never concerned of mine, but it was there. So just say, hey, if we get close to the end of this, you know, the build time, which is twelve months from now, let's say. And we don't have all eighteen thousand filled in, then we've got a, you know, a performer that might bust. So for us, it was an insurance policy. It's that can we add some additional density for the main floor to the north side and split that probably forty percent of that, not really just half, it's probably more like forty percent, and leaving about twelve thousand square feet, maybe thirty, thirty-eight, whatever the number is. And then you'd have six or eight, one or two-bedroom apartments in the back that would have access to the back. And then, so then you would just have smaller units in front that could be split up, however, for retailers in the front. So, but the overall intent from the beginning, as, as many of you know from the history, is that we were going to, you know, use that whole block all the way up to Franklin and and do two-hundred-and-eight units, but the, the, as you know, the zoning density doesn't allow for that. So really, the hope is we look to the future and you want to bring a grocery in here, you want to bring in other retailers in here, um, you need more density in order to hit that like Omaha does, like Papillion does. And so at eight hundred, it just, it, the math may not work out when we start doing the, the marketing, you know, uh, studies for those. So a lot of the retailers will say, well, it just isn't enough density for us to come down there. So there really was a look to the future, um, but along the way, it has the added benefit of being an insurance policy for us.
Okay. And then I'm going to ask a hard question, which is, is if, and I, your performer and all that, it's really none of my business, you know, that's, um, but my question would be, is, is there the off chance that for some reason it doesn't work out, that the whole thing becomes just an apartment complex?
We can't, yeah, that would, no, there's no chance of that.
Okay. So, and those...
That's an easy question, actually.
No, and that's fine. Those are just my questions, um...
Very good question. No, I, believe me, I, I know, and I, I know the neighborhood there wants more retail, and that's my goal.
Yeah.
And, and to be honest with you, we have some LOIs very close to being signed, so we're very excited. The, the, really, the hope is, and I think Tammy said, that the mayor said that, that there, that this will just increase density and allow more development down the road, whether it's myself or other developers on both sides of Mission, you know, like I said, from Hancock all the way down to Lincoln. So our hope is just to create this as a central business district, and that's really, that's truly most of the vision of why we want the text amendment, so...
That makes sense. And, and no, and I'm supportive of that, and I really hope everything goes well.
Well, I appreciate that, thank you.
And I appreciate it. So, um, would, uh, I mean, I guess, and, and is it, is it urgent that, like, we pass this right now?
Well, we, we don't have all the investors line up right now, so that, there is an importance for that. Again, like Tammy said, we have to come back through you again to, to amend the redevelopment agreement to get the TIF for it. So you'll be able to reevaluate at that point whether you think it's necessary or not. This is just really, I think today's vote just looks to the future of what, what, you know, what we can have in the frontier district, so...
Okay.
But, yeah, it really is kind of essential because we have a time, we do have a clock ticking on this one, so...
That makes sense. Okay, and that's all. So I appreciate you coming up and answering my questions.
You bet, Thomas.
I appreciate the council for allowing the public hearing, so...
Councilman Cook?
Thank you. Jeff, I don't have a question for you. I just want to make a statement. I can remember down there on Mission Street when I was a young kid, of the stores, the grocery stores, Western Auto, Johnson's Pharmacy, a movie theater, two banks. I can remember, that's where mom and dad took the family, and that's where we were at. And we know it's changed. We got to get feet on the sidewalks. We got to get people down there that are going up and down those streets and going into different stores, a restaurant, a jewelry store, a movie theater, hopefully someday a grocery store. And I just look at this as just the beginning. Um, I, we've gone through a long process. I, I've been on the council for ten years, and Mr. Preister was before me, and, and those properties down there, um, sat vacant for a while. And, and now we got Mercury here saying, you know, I got some investors and I, folks, we just got to get something turning down there. And I think this is going to be the start. And I think it's going to push more people down there. I think you're going to see changes across the street, down the street, up the street after this thing is developed. And I, I wish a hundred percent success. I hope the extra land, the, the second lot you own there, I hope you're building on that as soon as possible because you got people wanting to, to live down there and put a little business down there. Uh, it's been a long road to where we're at today. It's been too long of a road. And you look at what Omaha and Papillion and Gret and, uh, La Vista are doing, this is going to start something down here. We got sixty-five thousand people that live in the city. And we probably got another five-plus thousand that live just in Sids, in new neighborhoods. And I just look at this as the the investment that this group is putting in. I want to thank you, and I hope you're a hundred percent successful, and I hope you bring a lot more builders down here. So thank you.
Thank you. We really do appreciate that. It means a lot. And it has been a long road, as you all know. I think this is going on close to three years, so it's been longer for a lot of you to see this, so I, I get that. I really feel like I've been kind of part of the community doing this, so I, I got a lot of pride in this too, and I think this will be exciting, so... Any other questions?
Any other questions for Jeff? Okay, public hearing. Uh, the public hearing is open. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this?
Good evening. I thank the council and the mayor, uh, for allowing me this opportunity to speak. For the record, I'm Carl Hanson, five-one-two Coons Memorial Drive, here in Bellevue. And, uh, this is the first I've heard of this. I haven't been able to attend a city council meeting since pre-COVID, so it's great to be back. Uh, my concern here is a perception of conflict of interest. I know there, uh, it's not uncommon for elected officials to be business owners. But I know that, uh, some of our, uh, council members are real estate developers, and I'm concerned about a perception of conflict of interest. And I wonder if an amendment had been considered to preclude elected officials from undertaking any of these real estate deals and profiting from them. Uh, I think it's a legitimate concern, and I thank the council for, for hearing it.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. If that's directed towards me or Kathy or anybody else that's an investor, um, I can tell you right now, I have absolutely zero interest in this project. And, uh, been working on it a long time, but as far as any, uh, monetary investment, I have none. It's only for the city of Bellevue, and, uh, I'm doing what's best for the city of Bellevue, but thank you for bringing that up.
Appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. Thanks so much.
Yep.
And I'm going to concur on that. I'm just excited to get people to come to Bellevue to shop and spend their dollars in Bellevue versus anywhere else.
Whatever's best for Bellevue. Anybody else want to speak regarding the public hearing? I'll close the public hearing, and, uh, we have a motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Any further comments or questions? Councilman Gray, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. The, the issue is really the density, and I think density is a matter of opinion. And I see in Omaha, they're trying to get more and more dense, and they're trying to get more people in smaller areas. And that seems to be what the young people want these days. For whatever reason, I like a little more open space myself, and a garden and a yard. But young people seem to want to have tight quarters and packed in and have activity and have people around them, and this seems to lend itself to what the future is more than the, the past or what I may think. So if there's no problems with it with planning, and it seems to be working out in the bigger cities, it seems like it gives us an opportunity for developing, as we've heard, a place that's been very challenging for a very long time. And I too hope we can get a grocery store and some amenities that really serve the people. So I, I wish the project well. I hope everything goes as smoothly as it can from here on out and, uh, quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on eleven A? Okay, um, again, motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Please vote.
I have five yes votes, one no vote, with Burns voting no. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item five B, ordinance number four-one-zero-nine, request to rezone Lot One, Roca de Salvation Edition, being a replat of Lots One, Two, and Three, Block One, Vase Hill Haven Edition, and the south forty feet of Lot Three and all of Lots Four, Five, and Six, Block Two, Vase Hill Haven Edition, together with half of Vacated Thirty-seventh Street adjacent thereto from BG and RS seventy-two to RS seventy-two for the purpose of a church. Applicant Fortino Ramirez, general location eight-eight-zero-six South Thirty-sixth Street. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please? Applicant Fortino Ramirez, general location, eight eight zero six, South Thirty-sixth Street. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number forty-one oh nine, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article Three of Ordinance Number forty-one oh four, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about eighty-eight oh six, South Thirty-sixth Street. More particularly described in Section One of the ordinance and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Mayor, I have a request. If someone could speak, I'd like to open it up for a public hearing. Brad, do I make that motion first or do we, okay. I'd like to make a motion to open this up for a public hearing.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch, to open eleven B up for a public hearing. Any comments or questions on it? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, item eleven B is now open for public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak regarding ordinance number four one zero nine? Please come forward.
Good evening. Fortino Ramirez, civil engineer on the project, um, located at twenty-eight fifty-eighth Broad Street. Um, I just wanted to come up here tonight and kind of touch on a couple items that I felt, uh, need a little bit more clarification from our last meeting. Um, to start off with the landscaping, um, our intent with the landscaping is to do two primary things. The first is to beautify our frontage with Marie and Thirty-sixth Street. And the second one is to provide good solid screening for our neighbors to the north and to the west. And really the screening is to obviously block off any concrete paving or rigid pavement, but also, uh, any, any lights that might be produced from our, uh, parking lots, um, into their homes or whatnot. That's, that, and, and obviously we're, that's the intent we're showing on our, uh, landscaping plan. Um, but it also, you know, we've also talked to the neighbors and mentioned that, uh, you know, our intent is to work this out. So if we have to modify and more bushes here or there, you know, to achieve this intent of providing this good screening, you know, that's not a problem because we're, we're both on the same page with that. Um, it was, I was also asked about church activities. Um, I believe the question was, you know, are they currently holding any church activities on the site? And to clarify that, um, my mind, when I answered that, I, I went directly to is there any routine church activities at the site? And currently there is no routine activities at the site. Routine activities are held, um, at their current, uh, church in North Omaha. Um, the existing site, they're currently use it for miscellaneous stuff like camping or like retreats or whatnot. Um, I mean, they have a barn and a house to use, so there isn't much to hold a large gathering. Um, the other topic that was brought up was traffic. Um, with traffic, um, the reason why, uh, you know, planning in public works, they mentioned that usually for a church of this size, uh, a traffic study is not required. Um, it's because, um, based on the size of the church being permitted, so number of seats and number of parking stalls, um, the, the amount of cars that are gonna come to this site are not seen as a sufficient amount to reduce the level of service of the, uh, servicing roads and intersections. So in order to, uh, decrease the level of service, what you really have to create is enough cars for a prolonged time to really impede traffic. The thing with churches is that they, their traffic more or less acts as bursts of traffic. Um, and it's opposite to peak hours from the weekday. So their peak hours are on Sundays and they act as bursts. So you'll get fifteen minute bursts before mass starts and that's when people are arriving. And, you know, receipts. So, and there's never a prolonged time when there's a, a big queue that causes, I guess, a lower level of service of those intersections and roads. Um, I think, uh, there was another topic that also brought, was brought up. Um, and also have the, the pastor who's here with me tonight to speak a little more about it. Um, was that, you know, are the members now gonna drive from North Omaha to Bellevue? Um, and I, I think in, in, in that assumption, um, it's a bit of incorrect because we would be assuming that most people live in North Omaha, which is, is not true. You know, you know, the members come from the Omaha metro. Um, and I think the more logical assumption would be that most members live in South Omaha. It is a Hispanic church or the northern part of Bellevue, and this would be closer to them, so. Um, that's all I've got. Um, I did want to bring up the pastor for him to talk about, um, his church a little more in detail, um, the benefits that, um, he expects to gain from this site. Um, and just so you guys get to know him.
Just state your name and address and sign the.
My name is, uh, Ottenial, Tony, I'll call you Tony Garcia. And, um, address.
So I'll, I'll be doing a little bit of translation as well.
Uh, eighty-eight oh six, South Thirty-sixth Street, Bellevue, Nebraska, six eight one four seven. And, um, I've been a pastor for two decades, yeah. Uh, we started the, my, I am the third generation of pastors, so, yeah. I, um, when I was little, I had epilepsy, it was, was how my, my dad became a pastor. Because God, God did the miracle and I, I had epilepsy for five years and God, God healed me. And my dad promised to God that he's gonna be a pastor, so he's been more than fifty years. And I've been almost twenty, yeah.
So I, I'm gonna help him a little bit with, with the discussion. I'm gonna ask him in Spanish. Um, you know, what are the benefits that this church brings to Bellevue? So the things he mentioned was that he offers, uh, more or less a, uh, a knitting of the Hispanic community. Um, and, uh, he offers these, this by, uh, one, uh, twice a month or at least once a month, they offer a food bank for about a hundred and fifty families. Um, they also, um, provide a lot of like programs for the youth, um, such as teaching music, um, or musical instruments, uh, for the youth, uh, keeps them involved and with a good sense of community. Um, they also attend, uh, jails, uh, to, uh, meet with inmates and people that don't have nobody to visit them or talk to them. So the next question I'm gonna ask him is, what brings you to Bellevue and why this site? So what he mentioned was that they were, uh, in midtown and that the city of Omaha wanted to redevelop that area and they, the city of Omaha asked them to sell the building they were currently at. So in desperation, they ended up finding what they could and that was the building they're currently at in North Omaha. So with time, what's happened is, um, they built up their membership. They don't fit where they're at. And looking towards the future to provide accommodations for their members and, and keep growing and just, just provide, continue to provide that knitting for the community, is they started looking for a place and that's when they found, um, the location they're at, uh, with the open lots and that's, that's kind of where their, their vision began to, um, let's create a, a, a home with enough space for, for our members. So something else that he mentioned was that, um, a, a lot of his members, uh, come from the Bellevue area and also obviously the, the, the South Omaha. So it, this will be a convenience to them as well because it will be closer than the North Omaha location, which, um, it started out as just a move of desperation to find something. So that's all I have. Um, I don't know if there's any questions from you guys.
Councilwoman Welch?
Perfect. Um, thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Um, are they, are they planning on closing the other church or is this going to be just another site? That is.
It's been sold.
Oh, the other, the other building's sold? Okay. And then you talked about, and help me understand because I'm not sure I heard this correctly. You said there's no routine activities?
Yes, uh, uh, what I mean by that is like mass, like holding, uh, a routine type of, uh, routine activity, um, a church activity, so like a mass every Sunday or so, uh, that sorts.
So there is or is not routine?
There is not. At this site, there is not a routine activity. This site has been used for miscellaneous things such as camping or retreats.
So Pastor, where are you moving your place of worship then? If that church is closing, you've sold the building up north, is it not moving down to this building? And routine is okay. I'm just trying to get it clarified in my head.
Yeah, so, um, they have a letter of an, of intent with another pastor who wants to buy the church. And the, the, the letter just states, hey, if you guys get everything approved out there and you guys build, um, don't sell, don't sell that church to anybody else. That pastor wants it. The, the new one.
Yeah, please.
I think the question is, the location here in Bellevue, there will be a church, correct?
Correct.
That's going to be built, correct?
Yes.
And you're going to hold service that holds approximately a hundred and thirty people there, correct?
More than that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And will you on Sundays hold church or mass routinely, once that church is built here in Bellevue?
That is correct.
That's okay. That's where I was going. So, yeah, just, and just, just to clarify and to give the residents an opportunity to know that, you know, there is that burst on Sunday and then it disappears, kind of thing.
That's the, the general way a church, churches, traffic works, yes. It's a bursting.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you for coming back and for the clarification. The, the things that you mentioned about the lighting and about the landscape buffers, uh, that weren't, some of which weren't included, uh, along Marie Street and for those neighbors. And I appreciate that you're willing to work with them. Uh, I'll ask you in a minute, but Ms. Palm, in terms of right now, none of that is really in the plan. So how do we have more than, uh, a gentleman and a gentle pastor's agreement in making sure those things are followed through?
Mr. Ramirez did provide an updated landscaping plan, which does show that buffer along the northern, um, parking lot property, so what I will do is that will be the new Exhibit B to the conditional use permit agreement if it's approved, that agreement right there, so. See those dark lines around the parking area? That would be the additional shrubbery hedge that's proposed.
Great.
So if, if this is approved, that would be what you're approving tonight is that updated plan.
Okay. And we don't need to amend, that's already in it and it will be a part of it as the updated, so. Okay, thank you. And, and thank you for working on that and, and providing it too. The, the other thing that I've heard from folks was the traffic is going to be a burst. I agree with that and it's on Sunday, so it's not a normal peak time. But given that there are churches both to the south and to the north of it, is there a way to coordinate when the church services are held? So that we don't have everybody coming out at the same burst? And because it's kind of at the peak of the hill, again, it's traffic and safety and, and people at a particular time having a concern.
Oh, of course, I mean. Yes, that's something that can be coordinated with the church in front of us, which would be the, the most impacted. Um, yes.
Okay, and, and that's internal and that's a little bit of extra time, but if, if that could be done, I think that would delay some of the traffic kinds of concerns in the area.
And its benefit for both of our churches.
Right. I, I would think so. And, and I appreciate that cooperation too. And the, the building itself would be on the existing vacant ground, which is probably ten to twelve feet higher than the street. So I assume all that and, and the church, the grade will be different and access will be clear on both ways, so the, the safety factor again, and I guess Ms. Palm may have to answer that a little bit.
What has been presented to you folks tonight has been looked at by our engineering department and that's what they are comfortable with. Um, when these go out for review, they go out to a number of departments. They, um, go out to the police department, go out to public works, our engineers, also went to Sarpy County Public Works, so what you are seeing tonight reflects, um, what those folks were okay with as far as access.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything else you want to, either of you want to add?
Councilman Cook?
Thank you. I just got one more question. Will there be someone, uh, living onsite twenty-four seven? Is there a residence there? Is there gonna be, is a pasture where someone gonna be living there all the time?
Yes, that will be the pastor and his wife. Uh, I believe the CUP allows for two people max.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ramirez and Pastor Garcia. Uh, the public hearing is open. Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding eleven B? Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Pat Cockendorfer. Um, Mayor Hike, Mr. Wistro and, uh, council members. I wasn't aware that this was going to be close to the public hearing, so I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak. I live across the street from the historic Vase Hill Haven on Thirty-sixth Street. A couple months ago, we as neighbors received letters in the mail informing us of a meeting to be held by the Planning Commission, which invited us to attend and voice our thoughts about the plans of a church being built on the hill. Other than the fact that neighbors were to be notified, I don't know why we were even invited to voice our opinion. Because coming away from that meeting, I felt everything had already been decided. It was a done deal, that the Planning Commission had more or less okayed the church to be built on the hill. And any thought or feelings we had about the project would have no effect at all. There supposedly is a church operation on the hill now. However, by their own admission, they have no services there. But oddly enough, they are still tax exempt. There are currently four churches located on Thirty-sixth Street between Giles and Cornhusker and one on Thirty-ninth and Green. There are five churches south of Cornhusker and one a quarter of a mile east from Thirty-sixth and Cornhusker. There are a total of nineteen churches in the city of Bellevue. These churches are made up of several different denominations. This past summer, when the church was supposedly operating, code enforcement was called because abandoned cars, overgrown weeds and tree limbs. Five cars were towed from the property. They were either unlicensed, wrecked or abandoned. About a month ago, there were three. About a month ago, there were three box-type utility trucks parked up there and a vehicle that had been in an accident. I don't know what the license status was on those vehicles. Will this be the norm if the new church is built? For the old part to be the dumping ground for unwanted vehicles and discarded trash? Then there's the question of the little house off to the side of the property, supposedly not owned by the church. The fence is broken down and that yard is also overgrown with weeds. Who does this house belong to? I was disappointed to find that the Planning Commission had no data on traffic statistics on Thirty-Sixth Street. Before the Planning Commission, I found out from a source at the police station that there are fifty-five vehicles that travel northbound from Thirty-Sixth and Cornhusker. And there are thirty-nine hundred vehicles that travel from Thirty-Sixth and Giles southbound daily. There are several police officers who can attest to the fact that people speed on Thirty-Sixth Street. As a week ago Thursday, there has been a speed tracker in my yard. I don't know the statistics from that as of yet. Before a church is built on that hill, it should be necessary to do more research on where the entrance egress to that church should be. Has anybody put any thought into what construction equipment in and out of that area is going to look like? Given the entrance to be on Thirty-Sixth Street? How many times will we have to slow down traffic on Thirty-Sixth because of construction equipment coming and going? You must also take a take into account that Thirty-Sixth Street is a through thoroughfare for fire trucks and ambulances. And they don't, can't and won't stop for anybody. If serious consideration is not given to everything brought to the table and a decision has already been made to build the church, then opening the meeting up to the public becomes a moot point and makes me wonder why we are here. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Would you please state your uh address for the record?
Thirty-five zero nine Falk Avenue.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak regarding eleven B? Councilman Cook? Oh, go ahead. Come on up, sign in.
Hi, I'm Dan Reha. I live at three-seven-zero-three Marie Street. I've been uh in contact with Fortino and uh met with Tony uh here this last winter. We've been going back and forth with uh, you know, what what we expect to see at our house, if you will, regarding the church. And I I do appreciate the uh them saying that they'll work with us. Because uh my my biggest concern is, well, they at first they envisioned or asked me, you know, what do you, what would you like to see happen? And my first thought was, let's put, you know, like a shelter belt, what you see around farmsteads to block wind, noise, sound, light, all of that stuff. Um, so you you know, we came up with the idea of doing uh putting evergreen trees. And they said, you know, that sounds like a good idea and we don't uh, we don't think you're asking too much. I guess uh where I'm going with all this is I I appreciate them saying, you know, we'll work with you regarding the buffer, if you will. Because they're not planting, you know, forty-foot tall evergreen trees that are twenty-foot in diameter. They're gonna start out four feet taller. So I'm 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 thankful that they'll work with us. Because, you know, as cars are coming and going through that parking lot, basically those lights are gonna be shining right in our bedroom window. And we have uh two picture windows right next to our fireplace that face directly south where people are gonna be coming and going through that uh main parking lot, if you will, so. I I just wanted to say that, that we we have been in contact and I do appreciate them saying they'll work with us. Cause I mean, that was one of our main concerns is we we bought that house, it was our first house. And uh I don't know if you've ever been up Marie Street at night, but it is pitch black and that we we were looking for privacy when we, my wife and I purchased our first house. And so we're thankful that they're gonna try and work with us, so.
Thank you, Mr. Rea.
Thank you.
Councilman Cook, did you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. Tammy, I was wondering if you could address a couple of those things. You probably already have, that's.
Oh, I'm sorry. The question's for Tammy.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Uh and maybe Mr. Ramirez, you could address something about cars and people that the activity over there. But Tammy, we were we were talking about a little bit about the traffic, why there wasn't a traffic study. We were talking about tonight, we would be change, what the zoning is today and what could go there and what the change of zone would go to. And just some of the things that maybe have been brought up.
Sure. So currently, the um vast majority of the property is owned BG, which is general business. So um under the current zoning, you could have a retail operation. You could have a twenty-four-hour quick stop, um any number of retail and commercial um projects. Just for reference, uh folks that are involved are um are knowledgeable about like the Thirty-Sixth Street and Highway Three-seventy area. That's the same zoning that this property has. So any of those businesses that are there, you could get on this property currently without city council approval. So in my opinion, the change of zone to the RS seventy-two is extremely beneficial for the neighborhood. Because that will be extremely restrictive as to what can happen there. Whereas now, it's a bit of a wild card with that commercial zoning. And that commercial zoning, I assume, has been in place ever since, um you know, the Vase family had their um kind of banquet facilities, party hall, that type of thing. So we inherited that zoning from Sarpy County as we grew over time and took this area into our jurisdiction. And it's just never been changed, so this is a good opportunity, uh particularly for the neighborhood, for that change to happen. Um as far as traffic studies, typically, you know, that's a call that our engineers make. Um although I realize a church is definitely impactful to this area, it's far less impactful than um any of those permitted uses that could happen now under the commercial zoning. So um you know, our our engineers did not believe, and typically they don't in these types of situations, that um a traffic study needed to be provided in this situation, just based on the request for the less dense zoning and the type of use that was being proposed. Again, will there be impact? Absolutely, um but not as much impact if you had a twenty-four-hour, you know, retail operation or something of that sort. Um, you know, as far as construction equipment, I am not sure what the applicant or um his engineer, what their plan is as far as timeline. I think that's something we could definitely discuss. Again, you know, there's gonna be impact to the neighbors, um there is gonna be disruption. But um I would assume that, you know, Mr. Ramirez would be willing to work with the neighborhood as far as access points and what that would look like, and he might be able to speak to that a little bit better. But um I think that's most of the questions.
Yes, so in terms of construction, um this site is one acre or larger uh in terms of the amount of earth that's gonna be moved. And what that triggers is a grading permit. Um in this grading permit, it requires weekly uh inspections uh for any like mud tracking into the streets, any sediment runoff or uh and generally, it's it the intent is to keep construction on the construction sites and not tracking offsite. Um that is once a week um at the beginning, uh once every two weeks, once things are established, um and every time it rains. So that that is how we keep track, that, you know, construction activity doesn't ta- take over, you know, the adjacent streets. Um, you know, this the speeding issue, um I I think this is, this is a really a problem beyond the church. And I'll explain why. What Thirty-Sixth Street is, it's what is known as a strode. So a combination between a street and a road. Roads are more like highways, so get you from point A to point B as fast as possible, minimum exits. Streets are more uh as an area to create wealth for a city, um and you can think about them as a downtown area. Well, this is a combination between both. You you got a road that provides all the comfort for somebody to drive, you know, as fast as they can. But then we've added all this single-family like drives that access straight onto it. So that's really what creates, you know, the the safety factor. It's it's the the natural zoning and, you know, the the type of street that's ha- that's taking place. Um I think there was also mentioned about uh box trucks and abandoned cars. Um I believe that was at the beginning, when they were first, when they first bought the property and they were transitioning over. Um there was really nobody there, um so it was long periods of time before they would cut the grass and keep maintenance on that lot. Um now, I mean, this is gonna be their full-time space. So it's the place where they're gonna live, it's the place where they're gonna have their members, it's gonna be the sole site of all their activities. So, you know, maintenance is gonna be important of their well-being. Um and the box trucks, those are the the food, um the food trucks for the uh the food bank, yes.
Thank you, thank you.
Tammy, I like the word strode. Have you used that before? That's pretty good. Public hearing is still open?
I'm sorry, I have one more question. I think nobody has asked how many services are going to be held on Sunday? And is there one during the week? Sometimes churches hold um services or classes or whatever on a Wednesday night. And no one has approached that question either.
All right.
El miércoles, ¿a qué horas? ¿A qué horas? Food banks are on Wednesdays, uh three to five. Uh Saturdays, what they have is a meeting of church groups. They they call them cell groups. Um then Sundays, it's mass from seven to nine. P M. And in the morning, they have a smaller gathering.
Yeah. Okay, Councilman Cook?
The main mass is seven to nine P M with a smaller maybe grouping in A M on Sunday.
That's correct. He just mentioned that that is just kind of part of the Mexican culture, the way he grew up. People don't wake up in the morning and that's why they do it at night. So whoever wakes up early attends mass in the morning, but that group is very small. The 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 majority of the group uh meets from seven to nine. And uh i- the the reason because of that is because they they hold mass, a general gathering. Uh but then they also break off into smaller groups for uh Sunday school.
Thank you. Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor. The other question that was raised was the small house. It what's the status of that? I thought that was part of the property. Is that correct or and what's the status?
So it is, it is part of the church. It is a lot owned by the by the church. They use it as a uh I guess an emergency home for anybody in need, temporary. So if somebody goes homeless or something, it is it is a house that they kind of lend them temporarily to stay.
Okay, and it will remain as such then?
That is the intent, yes.
Okay, and the barn has been rented out for years. People have had lots of activities there. Is that going to continue or is it just going to be for church members and only church activities?
Yes, it it is uh now just another, I guess, uh building or structure uh that will be used for church activities. It no, what's going on here, it this sarge is gonna be for church activities. It's it's not gonna be rented out as a side business, nothing like that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Public hearing is still open. Is there anyone that also would like to speak regarding eleven B? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Um gonna need a motion for eleven B. Is there anyone like to make a motion on eleven B? Councilman Cook?
I wanna make a motion that we approve ordinance number forty-one zero-nine.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by McCaw. Any questions or comments regarding eleven B? Councilman Prester?
I guess I am belaboring it, but I I just wanna say to the neighbors that we have been listening, we have heard the concerns. Uh all of those concerns would really be much greater and much worse if this were a quick shop or something else that's now allowed to go into that area. Uh the church is more restricted and at odd hours or off-peak hours. So it seems that the accommodations they're willing to make, make it more acceptable than what something else might do. And although I wanna be sensitive to the neighbors and to their concerns, this is going to be watched and we have much of it in writing. And hopefully, it will all work out as it's being portrayed. And it will have good neighbors who work with each other in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I just had a couple, one question, um Tammy, um Pat brought up um at least one church that has been kind of sitting idle, no services. What are the requirements for the tax exemption when it comes to a church? Um I mean, I I'm concerned about collecting tax on on ground in Bellevue. And uh everybody paying their fair share, so is there, is there any recourse to that?
And Mr. Mayor, that's something I'm not familiar with. Um that all is done by, done through the county assessor's office, so Mr. Pittman's office. So I couldn't speak to what the requirements are or what they have to do in order to get that exempt status.
Okay, fair enough. I'll I'll check on that. Second, and I don't know if I'm out of a position here, Bree will correct me, but um I'm all about everybody having their public hearing, um but just, I don't know, Robert's rules, or you might know a little better about it. But um third readings are generally the voting and the second, the second reading is for the public hearing. So I just think the council needs to keep that in mind when they're when they're opening them up. Because we've opened up two of them tonight in third reading. And if somebody comes up next meeting and says, I wanna open it up and nobody opens it up, it's gonna look, it's gonna be hard to do. So I think it's a bad practice to to get into. I understand, I I mean, there's there's reasons for it, and I'm not saying both these were reasons. But um I I think we just need to be careful with that. Because, I mean, if we do our second readings, third readings, public hearings, we'll have four or five hour meetings, so and and there's a reason for that, so. So we do have a motion by Cook, second by McCaw. Um any other questions or comments? Okay, please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item eleven B one, request for a conditional use permit for Lot One, Roca de Silvecian addition for the purpose of a church. Applicant Fortino Ramirez, general location eight-eight-zero-six South Thirty-Sixth Street, and do I have motion? Councilman Casey?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to uh recommend approval for item eleven B one. Second.
Motion by Casey, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions on eleven B one? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. We have no ordinances for public hearing, second reading this evening. Item thirteen, ordinances for introduction, first reading, thirteen A ordinance number four-one-one-zero. Updated compensation ordinance to reflect change in pay range. updated compensation ordinance to reflect change in pay range for employees and our classi- unclassified and employees covered by Bellevue Professional Firefighters Association. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four one one zero, an ordinance of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, classifying the employees of the city, fixing the ranges of compensation of such employees, providing a pay range schedule, providing for publication in pamphlet form, repealing ordinance number four zero nine seven, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Thirteen A, uh, second reading and public hearing will be held October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two at six P M. here in the council chambers. Uh, item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances, none. Resolutions, we have none. Item sixteen, current business, sixteen B, approve and authorize the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement with the Papio Missouri River N R D for the bank stabilization of Whitted Creek and to provide for the rehabilitation to the stream, including the implementation of flood benches, bed slope protection, low-flow channel and stabilization of the banks as proposed in an amount not to exceed two million ten thousand dollars. And do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve item sixteen B.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by McCaw. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen C, approve and authorize the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement with the Papio Missouri River N R D for the bank stabilization of Quail Creek and to provide for this rehabilitation to the stream, including the implementation of flood benches, bed slope protection, low-flow channel and stabilization of the banks as proposed in an amount not to exceed one million nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. And do I have a motion? Councilman McCaw?
I'll make a motion. We approve sixteen C.
I'll second that.
Motion by McCaw, second by Welch. Any comments or questions? Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor. A comment that in just a matter of minutes, we're approving six million plus dollars for essentially floodplain creek bank stabilization. And, uh, these, this one in particular preceded us with the developments. But as more and more land is developed, the land that is less desirable becomes desirable. And then creek banks, low area floodplains, and those areas become targets. So, here we are spending a whole lot of taxpayer money, both through the N R D, which I appreciate the match. That's nice. But this is a big chunk of money and I'm just kind of gulping as I vote for all that money in an area that I wish the development was up higher and that we weren't spending it on. It's there now. What do we do with it? So, yeah, I'm supporting it, but I'm not real happy about it. Thank you.
Thank you and understood. Any other comments or questions? Motion by McCaw, second by Welch. Please vote.
All voting yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item sixteen D, approval of the redevelopment agreement. And redevelopment promissory note allowing up to four million twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventeen dollars plus accrued interest to offset TIF eligible expenses for Elevate Lofts LLC College Park Edition, redevelopment project located at Lot One, College Park Apartments Edition. And do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that we approve item sixteen D.
Second.
Motion by Welch, second by Casey. Comments or questions? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick. I'm not sure if Susan or Tammy or Jim should answer this. This was already approved at our July nineteenth meeting. There's just been a name change with the redeveloper. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Motion by Welch, second by Casey. Please vote.
All voting yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen E, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the new service agreement for space and Eastern Nebraska Community Action Partnership to utilize the buildings at nineteen oh eight and nineteen twelve Hancock Street for a two-year term ending October one, two thousand twenty-four. And do I have a motion? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve sixteen E.
Second.
Motion by Cook, second by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Sixteen F, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the memorandum of understanding with the Bellevue Professional Management Association for the term October one, two thousand twenty-one through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. And I'll take a motion. Councilman Burns?
I move we approve item sixteen F.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Casey. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item seventeen, administration reports. Comments must be limited to items on the current reports. Monthly report is given at the first council meeting of each month. September report is attached to council packet. Any comments or questions? Councilman Burns?
Actually, this is a question for Bree. Um, just because I know he's in the audience, um, I know code, um, is in here, um, but there was just like an issue. I know Jim and I talked about it with like, um, indigenous plants. I just don't know if I can speak about it as it relates to code and we can have a discussion, maybe just, you know, as a council for dialogue purposes of the issue, if that makes.
Is it in the administrative report?
It's not specific. So, I mean, it's kind of a stretch, and I'll admit that. But I thought about it, since we do have the resident here and then we're together as a council, um, code does report, um.
I would say if it's not specifically identified in the administrative report, we should either wait until next time or, uh, I think I know the email that you're referring to and give me an opportunity to look at that and,
Yeah.
um, address that at a different time.
That's fine, too. I know it's a bit of a stretch, but I just wanted to ask just in the event that, hey, we're all here, so, perfect.
I would, I would prefer to wait on it.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Another month has gone by. We'll put those in the records. Eighteen, no closed session. Nineteen, I'll take a motion to adjourn, please. Councilman Cook?
Make a motion. We adjourn.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, second by Welch. Please vote.
All voting yes. We're adjourned.